Yes! What could it be? What's going on? There we go. This makes up for that hunt. That's my new best friend. Oh, you silly little fellow. I love you so much. I'll do anything for you. He was born. I was born. Immediately give me a name. Ah shit, what should I call him? What did I like? Quaxly. Is that cool? I feel like Quaxly is a good name for the first one. Too late. I'm gonna love you forever, Quaxly. The only thing I never understood is how the feeding works. Like, what does he want? Whatever. I'll just carry him for a second. Look, he's so happy. He's kicking his feet. See, that's what I thought too, but then sometimes when I would feed him fish, when it would show fish, he would get mad and headbutt me. Let's try it. Because I don't have any blue fish. I got these fish. Here, I'll give you a rarity five fish. I don't know if he liked it or not. I feel like he's happy. You're adorable, Quaxly. Goodbye, my friend. I fucking love the Guku's so much. They are like, so delightful. Alright, so now... Now we can make Quaxly so beautiful. Oh, we can give him a little... Okay. Oh, there's like fucking pages of hats. Wizard hat. Winter hat. Yeah, Admiral hat. Okay, that's what we're doing. Wait, wait, wait. We got more pages. That's pretty cute. That's kinda nice too. That one's actually a hidden hat, so if you purposely mess up the goo goo pot and burn it, it'll give him an afro. So we're gonna give him one of these Admiral hats. As soon as I remember where they are. And of course, he's getting this purple one. Oh. Oh, that just looks like it's made for it. Is there purple though? Yeah, those are less cool. Actually, that's pretty nice. He's got a little ice cream. Oh, that's what we gotta get. Look, he's got a little treasure map because he loves us. I'm so sorry. I know that probably nobody but me cares about this. Let's see, what can we give him? Got a little purse. Oh, that's cute. It's a pear. That's my favorite fruit. I feel like these treasure chests are what we're after, right? Like, that's the look. I feel like that's the look. We'll give him like a tough-looking black one. Alright, we're almost done, and then I'll stop fucking around and we'll go do some G-Rank quests. Oh my god, is there purple? I'll post it on Twitter and see if he sees it. I don't usually care about cosmetic stuff, but I love these ducks so fucking much. Okay, this is it. This is it. That's it. That's him. What's this do though? Oh shit. Oh, he gotta have a lifesaver on his butt. Okay, what else do we got though? We don't wanna get too excited. Oh, he could be a boozy. He's got a little medal because he's a good admiral. Okay, I like that too. A little flag. That's too edgy. That's like early 2000s. Ah, bug net. I like that. He's got like a little baseball... Like, he's like, "I'm cute, but I'm gonna break your kneecaps if you don't give me the treasure." I kinda like that. I like the suggestion of it. But I think... I think the lifesaver is what we're gonna go for. Ah, none of them match his outfit though. Okay, you know what we're gonna do? He's gonna be cute but violent. Alright. And just because he's so sweet, we're gonna pick him up and give him a little carry. Yes, Quaxly. Yes! Look at how cute he is, guys! You're idiot! Okay. He better be yellow. Yeah, he is. Yes, yes! My beautiful boy! Alright, so we're gonna go for the black goo goo next. So that's gonna be the next boy that we're going for. I was born. Give me a... Yeah, but what do I name him? We got Quaxly. What about like Egbert? We'll call him Egbert. But we'll like literally spell egg. There we go. What? Why? Okay, I'm sorry I hit the button so many times. Shit. Sheldon. No, I hate that show. I don't wanna name him after that. You know what? Her name is Shelley. There we go. Shelley is a great name. There we go. I'm going to love you from now on! Okay, the next one will be Maggie. Maggie. Okay, that's the next one. The next one will be that. And we need to give her an outfit. Get outta here, Quaxly. We're all about Shelley now. Okay. No, Shelley. Shelley's beautiful. Shelley needs... That's pretty cute. Shelley wears fancy hats. What, is there only two of these? Okay, Shelley wears this cute blue hat. Oh yeah. And she has pink glasses. And she has like, she has like a nice purse. Or a whistle. No, no. No, not a bowtie. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like, she has like a nice little... What are we thinking? I like the mittens, but they don't fit. There's too much color clash. Okay, that matches up. Yeah, I feel like Shelley would wear that. No, no. Shelley is like... Yeah, yeah, yeah. What do you think? Shelley's like classy. And Shelley... What does Shelley like? What does Shelley... Shelley, you're not gonna hit people with a bat. Shelley likes to stay cool in the summertime, and she likes pink. But she wears blue because that's her uniform for work. There we go. Alright, Shelley. I will love you forever just as much as Quaxly. And due to server glitches, you'll probably actually keep your outfit next time I play the game. Because... Where'd he go? Okay, good. This is so delightful. Alright. We're like, we're getting some duck lore going. Our third friend is here! Oh yeah, it did show Teo as well, because you said it was a glitch when it was Peria. What was the name that you said we should name this one Crimson? I forgot. Because I gotta name it right away. Ballerina. I was born. Immediately. Give gave me a name. Alright. Fowl. Marina. Yes! Perfect. And then next week, we'll get our fourth one going. Uh, we're just gonna real quick set up their outfit. I'm so sorry. Get outta here, Shelley. You're old news. We need something cute though if she's a ballerina. I'm gonna love you from now on. Well, it's because he knows how I feel. Ballerina's not gonna wear that. Come on. Or that. Or that! Maybe, maybe they don't wear a hat. Nothing, nothing's coming up that fits. There we go. Alright, I guess it's a red flower. Not a bone. Come on. Is that a banana? I think it is. What the hell? How am I supposed to see? We don't want her to be vain. Like, that's just foolish. Maybe some nice sunglasses. What are you thinking? Or like, yeah, like a horn because she's very musical. There we go. Those are too heavy. I'm not seeing anything that's jumping out at me this time. Maybe. No, those are terrible. Okay, she wears like a beautiful necklace. Yeah, definitely a beautiful necklace. See, your whole thing was that we were gonna make her a ballerina. But I don't know. I don't know if we're seeing anything that's really gonna fit. That's kinda cute. Thank you very much for the follow, Soren. I'm sorry. I know this isn't peak frontier gameplay, but this is very important to me. And I only do one goo goo a week, so... We gotta make sure she's beautiful and ready to go. Okay, it is peak frontier gameplay. I don't know. Like, what do you think? Like that? I don't know. I don't know. Maybe this. Do you think this? Like, she's a musician. But she wants to dance. Okay, here we go. That is very extremely true. Okay, there we go. And then like, what do we want for a tail though? Not a bat. That's... Come on, that's Quaxly's thing. Come on. Shelley has that. Yeah, you should definitely give it a try. Crimson, you can fire off that link whenever you want. I gave you open permission to do that, by the way. So if anybody ever is interested and you're here, just toss that link right out. It's actually surprisingly easy to set up, like, real talk. Uh, there's a Discord that gives you step-by-step directions and everything. Does she have a bug, maybe? And they're all super helpful and nice if you have any questions too. I'm having trouble with this one. The other ones, it was so decisive. You know what? We're gonna give her a star. Because she's a star. Okay, there we go. Ballerina. You're ready to go. Join your brother and sister. Okay, we're good now. Look, Quaxly's rich! I think we can only have up to five ducks, so... We'll get some more ducks next week. We'll get another duck next week, because I think I can only get one a week. Because it wouldn't give me any new goo goo quests until like a while later. I am born. Immediately give me a name. I don't want... Listen, Crimson. Don't ever let them change that translation. Okay? It's my favorite thing in the game. Like, don't let them take it from me. Here we go! Mallory! But it's so funny. I love it. It's like the funniest thing in this game. I don't know why. It makes me laugh every time I see it. I am born. Immediately give me a name. Ah, fuck. Every time. Adorable. I was born. Immediately give me a name. Alright. Now how are we spelling Mallory? Was it like Malari or Mallory? What were we doing? Because that was like two and a half hours ago. Oh yeah, yeah. We'll do Mallory. Okay. Mallory. I like Mallory. Alright, here we go. Yes! I'm going to love you from now... They can at least keep that one though. That one's fine, right? I'm going to love you from now on. Let's get her dressed up. Let's get uh, Quaxly's outfit back too, because like, real talk, why does this keep happening to him? Uh, Admiral hat. That should be like here. See, I'm starting to like half remember where they are. Those are usually here. It is though. He does. He's like, "You keep bringing more ducks into my life. I'm going to love you from now on." Uh... Here is the Admiral shirt though. That should be there. See, I'm kinda learning it. And then we let him pick his club. Which one? What, you don't love that one anymore? Well, fine. Then you get the gray one because you're being a bit of a dick. Alright. Let's figure out Mallory. Mallory's not a clown. Ooh. Do you think Mallory might be an artist? I'm feeling this like green uh... Beret. Adorable. Yeah, maybe. Maybe she's pompous. Let's see. No, that's too much. That's dumb. That doesn't even make sense. The ice cream is cute. Oh yeah, like some cool aviators. Like, Mallory's just like... "I'm too good for everybody." Alright, now what kind of bag does Mallory have? Ah, is there a green one though? Because that would be... That would kinda fit like an obnoxious personality. There's no green one. I don't think we're gonna go with the fruit ones. What are we gonna do? No, Mallory doesn't have mittens. Oh, there we go. That's... Look at that. That's just cocky as fuck. I got a little tucked-in napkin on my chest. Alright, but they need a really goo goo. Uh, let's see here. What do we got? Is there one of these? I feel like if we're gonna do this, then the scarf doesn't make sense. And we'd have to do something else, but I really like this cloak. But let's double-check the other options real quick. Because I do wanna like, maybe work somebody in with that. Exactly, because they're adorable! No, that's what Shelley wears. You're not copying Shelley, Mallory. Oh! What do you think? Like, it's like, I'm cool, but I'm also like, a bit of a snooty artist. I don't know. Not a green jacket. That doesn't even make sense. I don't know. Is this too much? Let's see the other tops. Well, that just turned Mallory's entire vibe to like, she's like a farmer. But it's beautiful. I don't know. I'm kinda... Maybe we should rewrite Mallory's story. Because like, these overalls are pretty sweet. Or maybe Mallory works for the guild. Maybe Mallory's like a guild knight or something cool like that. Hmm. I don't know. No, that's fucking Ballerina's outfit. Don't try to steal. Mallory could kill anybody, Crimson, but I agree. I feel like maybe the jacket, but then we gotta change the um... I don't know. What do you... Okay. Should we do the leather jacket or the polka dot like dress? That's what I'm at. Yeah, she's the 13th knight. Maybe she is. We have to like completely rebuild her backstory now though. Um... I think the black one's the best. Keep the jacket? Okay, first of all, are we doing guild knight? Or sassy artist? Like, what are we deciding on this? Okay, so we'll do sassy artist. Alright, and then we need to rework her scarf to something else. That was the wrong section. Alright, keep those... Necklace. Alright, let's start at the back and we'll work our way forward. That's stupid for this outfit. Alright, here's what I'll do, Radits. I will... Next week, we'll make the final goo goo a guild knight. And next week's goo goo... Well, let's double-check this. Next week's goo goo is gonna be blue. So we're gonna get the blue one next week. And I will make it a guild knight. That's what we'll do. Oh shit. Alright, we gotta rework the beret. Oh my god. This is it. But what color? Okay, blue. Hundred percent blue. Blue is her color. But we gotta fix her hat now. Yes! But should we do the glasses a different color just for some contrast? Like, maybe give her... I don't know. Maybe there's a better headpiece. Let's double-check this. We're taking too long, but... You know what? We can have some fun. Got a bone because she... That's what we'll give the guild knight. We'll be like, "He killed somebody and has a bone." Oh, maybe we could give her a mirror because she's very vain. No, that's Ballerina's thing. You know what? I'm feeling the mirror a little bit. No, wait. It's true. Okay. Final vote: Should we do the flower? The sunglasses? Or the mirror? Because she's vain. That's my thing. Flower? Okay, let's see. Oh, yo, we'll do a pink flower because like... She's trying to hit on Shelley, and Shelley loves pink, but like... Shelley's really into Quaxly. But like, she's so cocky, she doesn't even care about their relationship. That's how she is. Alright, well, we have a backstory. You can't have a star. That's Ballerina's thing. That's stupid. No. No man, come on. Oh! Mallory's a bit of a boozy. Okay, we'll see what else we got though. That you wouldn't win a medal. That's so edgy. Yeah, I think the wine glass. Yeah. That's so edgy. I hate that one. That wine glass makes me think that she's like swishing it around, so we're gonna go with this one. Alright. Mallory is done. Next week... We're doing the guild knight. And they're gonna have rad sunglasses. Alright, Mallory, I will love you forever. I am gonna give her a little carry though. Look at it! She's got wine in her glass. You can't see it when you're making it. Alright, pick her up. Mallory! Welcome home. This is Quaxly. This is Ballerina. Where's Shelley? Because I know you have a thing for Shelley. There she is. You'll never get her though because she's with Quaxly. Alright, let's get outta here. I am gonna get that shiny though. Quaxly, why... No, I don't wanna do the lost and found cat. Why are you sad, my brother? I should carry him. Just a sec. I do wanna get at least one more hunt in, so I gotta get my shit together. Okay, here we go. Don't be sad. I love you so much. I can't sing, by the way. I'm so sorry. Look at how cocky she looks. You're never gonna get Quaxly. I don't care how rich you are. Alright. Shelley doesn't like Hunter. Shelley! Is it because I'm standing in the way of your crush on Mallory? Okay, let's get outta here. I feel like I'm slowly going insane looking at the Gukus. Alright. Who's next on the list? Fuck man, the lore is really evolving on them. Also, I found out that you can breed them. And I don't know how that works. But that's how you can get the rarer colors. You breed them, but I have no idea how. But you can only have a maximum of five. So, I don't know how it works at all. I wanna try to look into it, but I can't find any information. But I'm gonna try to find out. Alright. Okay, well, we need to get Teostra. That's what we want. Here we go! Oh, I like the blue. The picture made it look like it was gonna be like a dark blue. I like that blue. I think that clip's good. I think that clip's good. Look at him, he's so cute! Alright. I was born immediately give gave me a name. I really don't want them to change that translation, alright? Steve, I did it again. Okay, we're keeping the frontier window focused from now on. I'm gonna love you from now on, Steve. Alright, let's go. Alright, first of all, we have to get Quaxley back in his outfit. Where is it? The Admiral hats are there. Treasure chests are usually, there we go. Not a treasure chest, you know what I mean. There we go. I like, I don't know any of it, but I've got it like kind of the point where I could just like... Jam over to it now. Alright. Shelley, Flowerina, Mallory. Alright, Steve, let's get you done. And then you can join your si, well, we gotta start with Steve's like overall outfit. So Steve is a guild knight. Now, what color? Hmm... I don't, I feel like the pink and white really stands out against the blue. But the black also makes him look tough. Hmm... Yeah, I think you're right. The white, the white's good. Alright, now let's work on his neck. We'll work our way left, because I feel like... It'll be the hat that like draws the whole outfit together for a guild knight. Alright. No, we don't want that. No. I... That seems not right. No. Oh, maybe that could be like, that could be Steve's item pouch. Maybe? No, not that. That's stupid. No, he doesn't need gloves. Hmm... Ooh, maybe a whistle to like tell people, you know, to signal the other hunters? That's true. Not a bowtie. Bowtie, come on. No, no, no. Alright, you know what? I'm thinking the whistle, because like he's commanding things with the whistle. And I feel like Steve would have... A blue whistle. Yes, okay, there we go. Now, Steve... Steve, maybe Steve carries around a monster's bone in his mouth to let them know what's coming. Uh, no, Steve wouldn't eat a banana. He's working. He doesn't have time for that. See, I feel like the sunglasses would be good if we had like black lenses. Hmm... Hey, I don't think those glasses are gonna work for him. There's a popsicle? Yeah, he's like, I'm late for work. I gotta go. Well, maybe he could, maybe he could eat the banana. Oh, maybe, maybe Steve likes to do his job anonymously. He, like, he doesn't want people to know it's him. I think that duck in the background just caught a fish. Uh... You know what? We'll keep, we'll keep these masks as a possible. No, Steve doesn't love anything. Wait, what is that? Oh, that's just nothing. Okay. I feel like they did it specifically because of anime, though. I don't know. Hmm, I'm not having any luck finding something that really screams Steve. Dressed in business attire. That would be a weird thing to see. I can't decide. And none of the, the problem is like nothing's matching up. Yeah, maybe Steve just doesn't need it. An item. Oh, that's kinda cool. Oh, that's per, like, come on, right? That's what you want. I don't even need to look at anything else. Fuck, yeah. Alright. Alright, Steve, what do you, what do you carry on your tail, though? I feel like, you know those medals that we saw the other time? Maybe, maybe Steve is like a decorated veteran. We'll, we'll check out the other options, though, just in case. No, I don't like the edgy collar. Ooh! It's a little matchy, but do you think that's alright? Or do you think we should do the, uh, the medal because he's heavily decorated? Because this is kind of adorable, because he's waving the little flag around. Oh no, something's happening! Okay, I think Steve's done. That's it! We have all of our children! Ah! Quaxley's coming over to say hello! Alright, Steve, it's time to meet your siblings. There's Quaxley. He's running away in fear. You know what? Mallory, you'll get introduced last. There's Shelley. There's Ballerina. Wait, no, there's only five of them, you idiot. And there's Mallory, but Mallory's only got eyes for Shelley. So you're not gonna get anywhere with her. Alright, let's get back to work. Look, we got them all! It's beautiful and perfect. I think I am gonna clip together like... The full story of all of our ducks, just so I have it all in one go. Alright, guys. Papa's gotta go fight Nargakuga and get his ass kicked. Yeah, I gotta, like, I gotta set up the lore. There we go. I wonder if we'll ever get an egg? Because I heard the eggs are just random.